Yeah, it's great. Oh, that was a good one. Yeah, thank you. Smothering butter songs.
Yes, sir.
My wedding was late. I wanted to be last. Assistant mayor. Why she could also be bad.
I wasn't there that. I try to be here every week. Well, what we were because it was. They had that when they was back. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
One cheater this is.
It's six thirty now, so we're gonna start our meeting, regular meeting. So call to order our regular meeting here West Valley City. Today, the Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two and six thirty. We are in the city council chambers here. And the anchor location here is thirty-six hundred South Constitution Boulevard, West Valley City, Utah, A four one one nine. Roll call. We have four, five council member present. Scott Harmon is on Zoom and also Kent Land, the mayor is the excuse herself for this time. Also, let's go over to number three, opening ceremony. We'll turn over to Councilor Jacob of V T C Manu.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This evening for our opening ceremony, I've had the pleasure of inviting a spiritual leader and a community leader here in our community. For those who don't know, the Wat La Buddha Ram is set to be the largest Buddhist temple here in the state and is approaching completion. And we're looking forward to that event here later this month, a special ceremony that's coming up. And I wanted to invite Ajahn Neth, who's a spiritual leader and community leader here in West Valley and throughout the state to go ahead and open our meeting for us tonight. And thank you and your colleagues for being with us here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for having us. And on behalf of Wat La Salt Lake Buddha Halam, we would like to give everyone a blessing over here. And please put your palm together against, not against, but close to your chest and we will proceed giving you blessings. Thank you.
Yes, okay. No more.
Thank you so much. Okay, we asked the opportunity.
May good fortune come to your way. May all the tea protect you by the power of the Buddha, Dharma and Zangka. May you enjoy well-being. Thank you so much.
We know you're busy, so you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. But if you have to excuse yourselves, you're welcome to. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the luck we can get.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake. A special recognitions we have tonight is the Dr. Tyler Howe at the Ranger High Principal. Recognize him today. Yeah, thank you so much. Also, we have a John Anap is among Laotian Bo here and appreciate their time here. We say Jake do and invite them to come to our here tonight with the special pray. Appreciate it very much. Approval of minutes, we have September sixth, twenty twenty-two. We need a motion and a second for this.
Motion to approve the September sixth regular meeting minutes, second.
Okay, well, motion will and second Jake, so all those are in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So this motion pass it unanimously. Thank you so much. Comment period. And this one, we have thirty minutes. And you come up to the podium. Actually, tonight, we have no problem hearing tonight, so you'll get, yeah, you can come up to podium. A podium right there, you have a five minutes for each one of you and the monitor right in front of you. You can look at the monitor when you see the time, how much time left over for you. This one is a no debate or no Q and A, no question or answer. And you speak, all comments shall be directed to the mayor and the mayor see excuse herself tonight, so it's all the comments is sell that record to Mayor Protem that me. If you put your name, have the list there by chance. Yeah, we'll get the list.
Grab it there, sir. Nicole's.
Okay.
Participating by Zoom tonight, and she's usually the one that hands it to me, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Should he mention, appreciate it very much. Here, before we're gonna go on this one, I did wanna have a question for Nico Cam at online. Anyone wants to speak tonight online by chance, Nico?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, we're gonna proceed here, right here and put the hearing. So my markham is, so please come up and state your name and your address, so we can have that in our record.
And Nicole knows my address by heart, Mike, Mike Markham. Kind of a little twist today, I drove down Redwood Road today past that the lot where Mountain America Credit Union wants to build a big, beautiful building. I don't know why there has to be so much discussion on something so nice that's gonna go in on that lot that's been vacant for so long, the old house is already closed down and getting overgrown. I just, I don't understand, you know, there's been some other things passed that have questioned me, but this, it's beyond me that there has to be a couple of weeks worth of discussion and so forth on this Mountain America Credit Union, because I haven't seen him build anything ugly. You know, you look at the buildings they've got around, the structures they've already put up, they've got a number of them under construction around the valley. So I don't know what, what the hang up is there, and we didn't have to listen to the arguments about who owns what half of that alley. So get that done. That's my own comment tonight. Why we're opposed to something nice.
Thank you. Second one. Mark Whitaker? Okay, got it this time.
Hi, my name is Mark D. Whitaker, and I've been coming here for quite a few times now. But this time, I'm gonna talk about another new idea I have for a new law that would put restrictions on career politicians. It says would be hopefully sponsored by myself or Mitt Romney. The law is very simple law idea. It would require all a house of representatives just for five, four-year terms for House of Representatives. For senators, three six-year terms, one two-year term. And for President of the United States, one twenty-year term. Now, this twenty-year term, I think, is a good idea because we should probably have instead of changing the foreign policy of our country every four or eight years, this would give a more steady policy of twenty years. That's longer than Franklin Dillon or Roosevelt was in power. But I think it's a good idea. And I'd like to see it passed and represent it as with myself and possibly Mitt Romney or somebody like that to sponsor this bill. I think it's a good idea. And that's why I came here for tonight was to tell you about that new law that could go into effect. I would like to be President of the United States in twenty thirty-two. And that would mean I would be in from twenty thirty-two to twenty fifty-two. It would make me about ninety-eight, I might die in office, but I think it's a good idea to have twenty years of foreign policy instead of four or eight years of foreign policy. That's the reason for the new bill. And I appreciate you and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the Jim Vissok?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council and Jim Vissok. I am opposed to a twenty-year presidency term, just from the record. Code enforcement again, thirty-eight sixty-five fifty-six hundred, how many more times I need to talk about it? What's the status? What's going on? We're gonna be going into moratorium again, except this has the six-foot weeds. This is the corner where Ascend Academy is off of fifty-six hundred, if you guys don't know that. A very heavily traveled area and it's just, it's out of control. And like I said, I looked back when we still had the old system, the first time it was reported was back in October of last year. So this has been an ongoing thing, so it should have gotten through if it's into the abatement or whatever. Not that I wanna see properties abated, but I'd love to see this cleaned up. You know, a few months ago, I talked about all the properties along fifty-six hundred that didn't do their weeds along the fence. That got taken care of and it looks better. The, the U property, I saw our West Valley City people out there doing the side of the fence, cutting down all the weeds. That looks better. And so this one property stands out and it really looks bad for West Valley City. Congratulations to Alabama. I went to the concert and they were the first event that I've been to in the West Valley City where they did not say Salt Lake City. They used Utah a lot, which I'm one hundred percent for, we're all part of Utah. But they did not say Salt Lake City. The one singer said he loves Salt Lake City, but he didn't say welcome, you know, so they always said, welcome Utah, welcome Utah, welcome Utah. And that, that's, that's fine with me, you know, so, but Alabama's the first one. CRC Centers, Community Resource Center for the My Hometown Projects. In the last month, we've had two, a grand opening and a re, a National Night Out re-grand opening for after summer. The new center, there is approximately seven hundred and fifty people. And if you don't know where that one is, it's just right up the street from city, let's see, be right up the street that way, if I got my directions right. Great event. A lot of people from the neighborhood was there. We got a couple of my hometown people that are probably gonna talk about that. The CRC Center, the original one. We had an event Saturday. Were approximating about twelve hundred and fifty people. If you were out there, it was lots and lots and lots of people. We had food from all different groups there, wasn't just hot dogs. I mean, you know, or pizza and stuff like, there was so much other stuff there. And all the programs, they were able to get out, reach out to a lot more people. And that's what the My Hometown Project is about, neighbors helping neighbors and getting assistance. And these two centers are, you know, they're gonna be such a great resource. And then Nicole told me last week that there's two more for next year. I'm excited to see two more centers open up. We are West Valley City. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Jim Vissok. The next one is Mark Stephen.
Wonderful to be here, Mayor Protem and members of the council and other city officials. We wanted to come just to maybe continue on the theme that Jim was just talking about. My wife and I are responsible as directors of the Community Resource Center, the new one that opened, and we had our big grand opening two weeks ago. But just wanted to report to you from, from the grassroots level, the positive feelings that we're seeing amongst all the things that are going on there. The grand opening is wonderful. Nicole and Wayne and the mayor were all there for an extended period of time. We got to show them a little bit about what some of the generous donors have created for us in terms of the remodel and the equipment that's there. And we just wanted to give you an idea that we're starting classes tonight. There's a buzz with the ESL students that are back in the building, excited to see each other again, excited to be back in class. We've probably got over a hundred students that are signing up for a variety of classes. And we're just excited to see the love that they're feeling to just come together. The sense of neighborhood, we felt at the party that Jim mentioned with around seven hundred and fifty people there. None of that would be possible without the support of West Valley City. And we're excited about what's happening, the changes we're feeling as we see people come together there. So just really a big thank you to all of you for the opportunity of working in this wonderful city with the great support we feel from you and from staff that makes all the difference. Craig Thomas, Alex, Mark, you know, all the folks here that we meet with every couple of weeks just to say, you know, how can we improve things? And we get such wonderful support from everyone here. And so we want you to know how much we appreciate that and the, the support that we feel from you and want you to know that wonderful things are happening as a result of that and people are feeling good. We had the wonderful opportunity of saying, you live in a wonderful place, the city is providing these opportunities for you. And, and there really is an awakening of we do live in a good place and that's what we're excited about. So thank you so much. That's all I wanted to say, but I appreciate being here. And my colleague, actually my boss, John Roberry will follow up from that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark. Next one is John Roberry.
Thank you. It's good to be here. We just came this evening to express our appreciation to West Valley City for the support we've received. Both as we have opened the Community Resource Center to provide at no charge instruction in a variety of areas, including art, music, learning English as a second language. And tonight, we actually start Spanish classes for those who want to learn to speak Spanish. It's, it's a wonderful environment there. But beyond that, we've been working for some months in the neighborhood, helping people with projects that they can't get done themselves, marshaling volunteers who come and participate in the projects, all of which is wonderful and none of which would be possible without the support of the city and the people in the city. And so we're here to say thank you. We think that the, the results of these efforts are going to be an increased sense of community, a feeling of neighborhood that will be increased as people get to know each other a little better through the projects that are going on. And we hope in the long run, a, an ability to self-sustain these kind of efforts to support and, and help your neighbor. And that's why we call it my hometown. We want people to feel that they have a hometown, that they belong to a hometown and that someplace they can feel comfortable staying and, and living in. We just appreciate so much the support we've received. As Mark said, Nicole, Craig, Alex, and all the people in the city offices have been remarkable in their support. And without fail, have been there to support us when we needed something that we couldn't provide for ourselves. So once again, hopefully, this will have an impact that you'll be able to see and even more so that you'll be able to feel as we continue this. This is a, this is a long-term effort. This is not a, a short-term effort. So we'll be here for a while and we appreciate working with West Valley City. It is truly a joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Next person is Jeff Nelson.
Good evening, gentlemen. Is Scott here? Is Scott Harmon?
He's online.
My concern is a safety concern on thirty-six fifty south. Major problem over here. Between thirty-two hundred west and the high school, we've got a serious speeding safety, no sidewalks. I've, I've lived here over twenty years, witnessed it for many years. It's getting worse lately. I don't know why. But the speeding is incredible. It's, it's a matter of time before a kid's gonna get hit. From District One, the crossover to Pioneer Elementary comes across two cross-sections at thirty-three twenty-five and thirty-four fifty. There's no crosswalks, there's no signage. And many kids I watch every morning try to cross this road. Some dart out, some hesitate, you know, it's, it's a serious problem. But the speeding is unprecedented. I cannot tell you how bad it's been getting. Cars come by, last night I was talking to a neighbor and one came by sixty-five miles an hour at thirty-three twenty-five. Something needs to be done. I'm, I witness this every day. It's not a day that goes by, I don't see the amount of speed on this road. I feel crosswalks, some pedestrian signs, maybe more speed signs. I did talk to your chief of police back in May. He put up a sign on the trailer to check speed on the wrong direction. It didn't really help because the speeding seems to be going mostly west towards the high school. So I wrote Karen Lang and Scott Harmon in May, just to see if I could get him to talk to him about it and I get any response on your website. So I don't know if the, the emails didn't get through. Don't know how to address that to find out. But it kind of explains more in detail, you know, what I'm witnessing every single day. It's it's a matter of time. There was an accident there three days ago, the road was blocked off for an hour and a half at eight AM. I don't know what happened, but it looked pretty serious. Thirty-two to the high school is where I witnessed the majority of. I don't think signage would be too much to ask. You guys agree? Crosswalks, maybe? That's something we can look into? It's not a question and answer thing, I take it.
Yep, not at all. Okay, yeah, thank you.
First time here, sorry, gentlemen.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, just hear me out. The safety of this road is it's got me very concerned. I'm witnessing it every day. I live, I've been living on that road tw- over twenty years. So I hope we can address this problem. So I hope we can address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, the next person is Richard Noah.
All right. Thank you for hearing me again. My name's Richard Noack. I live on twelve thirty-two west on Parkway. Um, actually run a five-one-two-three, a federal nonprofit. Uh, rescue on the property. Um, it does involve some of the areas. We have a leash drawn up, but my personal dwelling is not included in that or the back parking lot. So um, I was complaining last time about city ordinance and today I had a community service work. We also provide um community service through courthouses and and such types of things. And the client I had today, we were talking about some of the things I needed to fix and we're planting grass in the front where some of the birds dwell. So he was allowed to help with that and he said, well, I had city ordinance said I couldn't have wood chips. Well, apparently I can have them in my yard and you can't have them in his yard. So I, I think there's definitely some inconsistencies of of how um, some of our city ordinance works. Mr. Grimes actually was, it was interesting. He recognized this particular crate I had to bring it in. So I'm actually um, I'm handicapped, so every day we go out and pick up three to five hundred pounds of produce. And we'll unload the produce on the carts, wheel them through the driveway. We'll sort through what we need. You know, the refuge will be loaded back in crates. Sometimes a crate will sit in the driveway until they're loaded in the van. He's mentioned those before, but this particular blue crate, I usually I flip it over and I'll use it to, to step on up into the van. And you know, many times I'll leave it there and that will be the only thing in the driveway. So when he came by a month ago to, to walk through and write up some violations that he was noticing, he didn't, we talked about that crate before. So I, you know, I can see, you know, things like unlicensed cars or flat tires or overgrown grass or weeds, but you know, some of these things are, can, to me, seem to be a little bit overreactive to the situation. You know, I agree, everybody's, you know, a lot of people, most people have nice frontage in their house, but most of the people in Chesterfield were Chesterfield's different because it's, it doesn't have curb and gutter. Um, it's agriculture. Most people have like a half acre where a lot of your curb and gutter neighborhoods are on like a tenth of acre, even one point oh five. So um, I went licensed, uh, I had two trailers in the back when I used to haul things. This was like a camp trailer. I haven't used it in four years. So I need to go get that license and move several cars. Um, one I had to repair was worth two thousand dollars. So and being I'm disabled, I, I don't get paid by this nonprofit. So you know, this is actually getting very expensive for some things that are in my backyard, which are not visible from the street or my neighbors. And I think some of the ordinance, um, you know, as long as it's not emitting odors or it's not chemicals or I believe people should be able to keep some things in their yard. I mean, many people have horses, goats, um, tractors. Um, one person has an old car sitting right in the driveway with parts missing. So I'm not gonna try to start complaining about my neighbors, but once I've, you know, I've been personally targeted now, it's it's like he wants my yard sterilized completely. I have one car left, which I can't find the keys for. It's a Mercedes, which does run. And I run out of funding. I have a hearing coming up Thursday in two days. So I'm hopefully gonna show the judges, first time I've ever had to go to this. Which is another issue I have is um, I did have some ordinance violations five years ago. And when I read it, it said, yeah, you know, for a year, you have to make sure you don't reviolate. And he's now comparing what happened five years ago and not giving me any time. He gave me sixteen days on a half acre property to clean up all the branches and chop trees and plant grass. I put about eight hundred dollars in my front yard already. So um, yeah, it's interesting because um, you know, my neighbor, I think I mentioned it last time, he also had some write-ups about thirty percent of landscaping. He just refused and nothing happened over that. I'm just worried, you know, again, I'm just worried about, you know, this ordinance works different ways and different parts. And even on the same street, there don't seem to be consistent with with what they're doing or how they're treating the residents here. So, but like I said, I do appreciate, I know what their goal is, is, is to try to keep properties um up to date and keep them healthy and keep their value up. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard. I uh, will bring this uh up let's uh, this, let me see, come and peer it back to the uh council. Uh, first city manager, any comment?
Yes, sir. Thanks. Had just a quick couple of things. First was, I just wanted to make a general comment to one of the concerns of what, however, the last few weeks on noise complaints. Okay. And this is just for the general um, interest of the public. So I had shared with the council during the week, uh, a record of what the police department and CPD department had done in the last week and have been doing for a number of weeks as noise complaints came up. Thought I'd also just mention again for this week, there have been forty-one noise complaints we got over the weekend. Uh, most of those are first times, few of them are repeats. Couple of them were cited, first time, couple of them were cited criminally and civilly and uh, level two citation in one case. And then others were again, just were spoken to, given a warning. So just nothing specific to any particular address I wanted to bring up, but just generally let you know that those enforcement efforts are and have been taking place and will continue to do that. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't know if everybody got a chance uh, or anybody got a chance to review your operations brief this week? But if you have not, there's one item in there particularly I'd like to see under the police. So just get a chance to do that. Our police did some really good work on a particular case, which I don't really wanna go into the details over the microphone, but literally did save somebody's life. And, and that's not all that unusual, but the circumstances around this one were. So wanted to mention that. And then also the, um, I did wanna speak a little bit to thirty-six fifty. That's a new issue that I've heard about. And just for the gentleman's knowledge and also generally, there are uh, infrastructure improvements that need to be made on thirty-six fifty. We've known that for a long time and it's a funding issue as always. But good news is that there is a project coming up within, it's either two or three years. I can't remember which. And we're still putting together funding, but we have partial funding and partial design uh, for thirty-six fifty that will put in curb and gutter and sidewalk in those areas that don't have it. So that's not gonna happen tomorrow or next week, but it will be happening. The other thing I wanted to mention on that was just from an enforcement standpoint, happy to hear that um, um, concern and issue, we'll pass it on to police. We do have a lot of police officers up and down thirty-six fifty pretty regularly. So it wouldn't be hard to keep an extra eye out for speeding, that sort of thing. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, uh, city manager. Thank you for your, your report regarding the, the noise last week. We say that very much. Uh, turn over to the council. No? Okay. Well, I have a, a comment. Um, first, I just kinda, I try to uh, capture the whole uh, picture here. Um, every single public hearing item, we had to go through two weeks. That's our procedure. Um, so uh, the one with uh, Mountain American Credit Union right here on uh, uh, twenty-five thirty-one South Redwood Road. Uh, it's no opposed this for this one. Basically, I think we the rule here, the two weeks for us to study and to ponder. So uh, we haven't voted yet, you know, we're gonna go into vote here and I think we're gonna pass, but uh, just that's, just want to let you know. The second item I wanna cover right here is um, my hometown. Uh-huh. I think it's a great project and a great organization there. I just wanna say thank you to the city to um, to make the city cleaner, nicer and closer. We are very close together. Um, a lot of projects doing the same. It's uh, it's really nice. It's uh, everybody is together. Uh, I think it's a good organization. Uh, go back to item number, um, the speaker number six is Jeff Nelson. If you can stick a little bit longer, you can talk to uh, G P A Colin Jacob and also Public Works, Dan, maybe they can help you out. Um, and uh, yeah, I, I just wonder about thirty-six fifty, city manager mentioned about this thirty-six fifty cell and the traffic right there, I believe it's the thirty-two hundred west, the traffic light. It's kinda like uh, I don't know, but quiet uh, accident there sometimes. Yeah, I don't know why, to be honest with you about why, but I think I, I roll uh, I ride that roads a lot at the time. Yeah. I, I, I have a couple of houses rental that way, so I did go back and forth a lot. And I don't know why, uh, maybe we gotta study that. It's thirty-six fifty south, thirty-two hundred west. Um, turn left, turn right or something. Mostly turn left, went west to from east to west, left turn on thirty-two hundred west. Um, I saw it about three or four times uh, for the last three months. Yeah. So I didn't wanna say that with, with you. I don't know why, maybe we study, but now we go back to item number seven right here, resolution, uh, item number eight, uh, resolution twenty-two uh, dash one forty. And um, I will turn over to our city manager, uh, Wayne Pyer. Can you give introduction to tell us a little bit about this one, please?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So this item is a contract change uh, to an all ex- already existing asphalt improvement project for the year. And this would be in addition to repair and reseal the parking lots at Centennial Park and UCCC. These aren't the only um, parking lot or asphalt work that we're doing for the year, but this is additional to the work that we're also doing. Be for a hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. In addition, would come from fund balances approved. They are in serious need to repair and resurfacing. Um, the one lot's twenty-five years old now. The other one's eighteen. We do do periodic maintenance, but naturally they do get worn and, and are coming apart and we wanna do some work on those. There will be other work that needs to be done on these two lots in addition to this resealing project that we're doing, but for now, that's what we're, that's what this item is for, is resealing and striping and those sorts of things.
Thank you. Uh, I will turn it over to uh, the council to uh, discuss or motion.
I would move to approve resolution twenty-two dash one four zero.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, I'll turn over to Nico Cam at for recorder.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Hi.
Councilmember Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Ten Hune?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, second one, uh, resolution, uh, twenty-two dash one forty-one. City manager, please.
Thank you, sir. So this is for the purchase of a Ventrack brand tractor and attachments for the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, this would be, and comes with a number of different attachments for different work. The primary purpose of this is to fulfill our maintenance responsibilities on the Mountain View Corridor Trail as we have accumulated those over the last few years as UDOT has completed that project. In addition to that, the, the tractor will have dual use with those attachments in other areas, parks, parking lots as seasonal requirements um, uh, are called for.
Thank you. I'll turn over to the us, to the city, uh, discussions or motion.
A motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash one four one.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, have a second. We'll turn over to the city recorder, Nico Cam.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Hi.
And Mayor Pro Ten Hune?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, resolution uh, twenty-two dash one forty-two, please, uh, city manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this resolution would authorize an interlocal cooperative agreement between Salt Lake County and us for the for partial funding for the Crosstown Trail. The Crosstown Trail, as you know, is a project that we've been working across for many years and we complete sections, join up other sections as funding and as, as availability becomes convenient. And at this point, we are looking at making a major improvement to that. And crossing from thirty-six hundred west to twenty-seven hundred west of Parkway Boulevard. This would involve one point three million dollars in county transportation funds that they would provide towards the three million dollar project.
Thank you. We'll turn over to uh, to the council, uh, discussions or motion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-two dash one four two.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. We'll turn over to Nico uh, Cam at for uh, city recorder, uh, please.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Ten Hune?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, no process until now, right, city manager?
No, sir. Thank you.
So we need the last motion.
Motion's adjourned.
Okay, so uh, we are adjourned. They say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so we are adjourned. Okay, thank you so much.